This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, at this time, let's see, there's nobody else here. We have a quorum. Dan LaValley, Paul Fergal, our new member Stephen Johnson, and myself. We have a quorum for our planning board meeting for May 17th, 2023. It is on Zoom, and the first item of business is a stormwater permit application that was submitted by Islam Agayev at 81 or 481 Valley Road. And I believe Ryan Nelson is here from Levesque Associates that did the design and plan, who is here to present. Ryan, are you there?
Yes. Hello, everyone. This is Ryan Nelson from our Levesque Associates. I'm going to attempt to share my screen. Can everyone see this?
Yes.
Okay. So the project site is at 81 Valley Road. This is on the southern site, or sorry, southern side of the Valley Road. It's an existing meadow. The applicant, or Mr. Agayev, I think had started placing some fill on the property, which brought this all to attention. However, his ultimate goal there is to build a single-family house. So we went out to the site, surveyed it. We delineated wetlands in a stream at the rear of the property off-site. There's an intermittent stream located here with some up gradient drainage rivulets, which aren't regulated under the Mass Wetlands Protection Bylaw, but however, they are under the Southampton Wetlands Bylaw. Regardless, all proposed work is located outside of the 100-foot buffer zone to those areas. As far as stormwater management, here's the proposed house location, proposed septic. Septic design has been designed by Civil Engineering Associates. Bob Cafarelli, I believe, did it. The house will be located in the center of the property as the high point, and stormwater will sheet flow to the rear and to the sides, to the sides. So it would be a swale constructed that conveys sheet flow from this property as well as from the up gradient abutting property to the west, which will be collected at a grass bio retention area in the rear backyard of the property.
I have a quick question about that, what you just said there.
Excuse me, sir. When I call upon you when it's time, I'll have you comment. I want to leave him, make his presentation first, and then ask for questions.
So is there any way I could have him pause so I can write down the questions when necessary?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna complete this as we usually do. The way we go through this, he's gonna present, and then you can ask the questions afterwards.
All right. Well, could he slow down a little bit?
Mr. Nelson, please continue.
Sure. I'll try and go slower.
Thank you, Nelson.
So that the way we've designed the site, the intent is that all grading will sheet flow stormwater to the perimeters, and then the perimeters will have some sort of swale. You can see there's a low point at the midway of the driveway here. So this low point will catch runoff from the front of the yard, routes that are on the side to the low point between the two properties, and then ultimately to the bio retention area here in the rear. And then the same thing is going to happen on the west side of the property. There's gonna be a high point here, kind of a dividing crest. Stormwater sheet flows this way, or then it goes this way along the swale to the bio retention area in the rear. Silk fence is proposed along the entire perimeter of work. There would be an anti-tracking construction apron where the equipment will be coming off of Valley Road onto the site, and our total limit of work is under one acre. It is at 43,525 square feet. So everywhere within the proposal amount of work, the final condition will be seeded lawn area. I think that hits upon all the main components. Have to answer any questions.
Paul Fergal, I'm gonna call on you for your expertise here from the board. Paul, if you've got questions?
Yeah, sorry. I was trying to find my mute button here. The biggest concern I had looking at this before, and I think it has been answered already, is that stormwater is being captured on-site, meaning that there isn't gonna be, the design here is not gonna have water flowing onto neighboring properties from this side, nor it's gonna be from this side. Instead, it's gonna be intercepted. From what I'm hearing, there's a high point here that's gonna divert water to this direction as well as this direction, and it's conveyed over to here, and then it ultimately goes to the jurisdictional wetland that's down here. Is that my understanding, Ryan?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So we're not gonna expect water going based on the grading information you provided to go on the neighboring properties. Given the, excuse me, given the topography around here as well as the proposed contours, it's not, not doing what I'm pointing at.
Correct. If it's graded correctly as shown, there shouldn't be any runoffs onto abutting properties.
So from a, so this plan here, just, just, just to, can you zoom in on this area here? All right, perfect. So Ryan, I guess the way I'm looking at this, so this is just your general grading plan, your erosion and sediment plan. Do you have some, do you have that shown somewhere about the, you know, were we putting hay bales and everything else to minimize impacts here?
So this line right here that's labeled, that's the proposed silk fence line. And we do have a silk fence detail on the same plan sheet. We only had submitted one sheet.
Gotcha. Okay, I didn't see that. That's why I'm wearing glasses here. Right. So the silk fence to protect erosion runoff is right here, outlining its limits here. Okay. So those are the big items that we look for from a site impact standpoint, making sure it's not gonna transport, well, it's gonna be transporting a lot of soil washout, run out into this wetland area or any property for that matter. So it seems like it's contained here with the design. And I don't, I really don't have any further questions. To me, it seems like this meets what we would wanna see.
Dan, do you have any questions?
No, I had looked at the plan before, and it looked good to me. No questions.
Okay, the gentleman that spoke before, John, would you state your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. John Muller, 79 Valley Road. The low point would be eastbound side.
Which would be here?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. With all due respect for everybody that has been planning this and the previous two that didn't have any questions about this, this, this property being non-percable, everybody understands what non-percable is, correct?
Yes, we do.
So my question to you would be, this catch basin on the south side that you are proposing before it hits the wetland buffer, how deep of a catch basin are you planning to dig there? Or is this, is this in a plan to be a catch basin that is, has a certain depth?
I can answer that. So this is going to be a, a cut to grade of about six inches. So it's a surface bio retention area. It just meant to temporarily hold stormwater runoff to minimize peak discharge rates. So based on the existing contours and proposed, this area will have a depth of about six inches.
Okay. Now, with that said, it has not rained here in about three weeks, I'd say, maybe a little bit more. Has anybody drove by in the past three weeks and seen what a property looks like currently?
I have not.
Okay. So my, the reason why I'm bringing this up is because there is currently a big hole where the house is going, plus a hole where he's permitting this south side retention pond. Both of these holes have held water since it's rained. And when they fill up, they drain way off onto my property. I've had three rivers come across in the past six months every single time it rains. The river floods. So my question is, if it's non-percable, and you're building a catch basin that's six inches deep, and there's already two holes on the property that are probably, I would say, good 18 inches to almost two feet deep, that stay full all the time and continuously dump on my property every time it rains, how is it possible that this six-inch hole is gonna solve that problem?
Ryan?
Sure. I think the, the conditions and the runoff problems you're experiencing now are because of the fill that was prematurely placed on the property and...
Okay. So you think it's because of the fill? You don't, you don't think it has anything to do with the non-percable soil that this property has always held water? For as long as I've been here, it's been a swamp all the time.
I'm not sure what you mean by non-percable soil. We have valid perk tests.
So once again, what I mean by that is, it hasn't rained in over three weeks now, close to a month, and I still, there's still a pond over there that has polywogs and ducks every morning. My kids are always over there throwing rocks in it, and it's, and so it's non-percable. The water barely moves. It's been so hot and dry, and it's still a pond over there. So that's, that's what I mean by that.
Right. So I think the fill is creating impoundment areas, and our, our goal with this bio retention area is not to infiltrate or to percolate water. It's to attenuate sheet flow runoff, which eventually will go to the wetlands.
So you're in hopes that that's gonna happen, which I can guarantee you that's not going to. Now, if you talk about the east side, you said you're gonna have a lot of the water drain off to the east side, which is my side, and it's gonna catch my drainage on my property for my low points? Is that what you're saying?
A portion of it, yes. There is a drainage easement.
So that's legal for you guys to do is to approve this sketch to dump onto my property for that to go in the drain to dump on my other neighbor's property? That's, that's what you're saying?
And the property as it stood before any development, 100% sheet flowed onto your property. If anything under the proposed congestion, there'd be less.
That's not true, because it was a lot lower before they brought in all this. So it all gathered on that property. It barely ever came over to my property until they brought in all this fill.
So the existing condition survey, topographic information you see in gray underlying on the plan is the topography prior to any fill being placed.
So the wetland, with a wet, I'm sorry, just for clarification, is this the property you're talking about, where the wetland is?
I believe he's talking about his...
Yeah, I'm talking about, right there, correct.
So the proposed, the way I'm reading the proposed contours, and John, this is the question, Ryan, excuse me, the question I asked you earlier was, the water's running off the site in this direction, not towards the adjacent abutting property, but parallel to the length of the lot, towards this proposed basin that you're, you know, stormwater, basically, it's attenuating the water, slowing down its velocity, it's holding it down, and then ultimately, when it gets to a certain elevation, it's gonna follow the natural contours that exist there today, and goes to the wetland that's been historically collecting water.
Also, but before you continue, that's not correct. That water that's in that area goes to my barn. There's a river. Every time it runs, it runs right in front of my barn. I have videos of every time it's rained in the past six, eight months since they did this, of three different rivers running across my driveway. And that area that he's projecting, that catch basin, is one of those areas. It fills with water, as is right now, and just floods over, right?
Okay, let me, let me interject here. Now, the existing conditions are such. Mr. Nelson, these conditions are going to be the remediation. Am I, am I correct in assuming that, not the existing conditions that you're showing?
The grade contour lines are existing. The solid contour lines are proposed.
So, so anything that Mr. Muller might be speaking of right now are existing conditions, not after the construction of the flows where you want them to go into the retention areas, into the area in the back on the south side, correct?
Correct. And I, I did see, you know, I surveyed the property. I see exactly what John's talking about. I validate his concerns. There is stormwater overflow that was occurring, and we took that into account when we designed this by, you know, cutting this contour back and creating a swale and a low point, a foot lower off the edge of the driveway than what exists now, to try and keep that water from cresting over his driveway.
And I appreciate that. But like I said, when this property does not percolate, and it just builds up, like I said, it's been a long time since we've had rain. It's already still a puddle over there. Once it starts raining again, it just builds right up and floods right over. So my concern is that when you bring the water to the back, to this so-called catch basin, that's only gonna be six inches deep. Once that fills up with all this new grading from the back of the house that goes down, and you're proposing both sides going to the back as well, it seems to me like you're dumping quite a bit more water than what's there currently into that area that is a troublesome spot for me to begin with. So with your proposal, it almost seems like you're gonna put more stress on what's existing.
That's not really the intent of a stormwater management system, is not to exacerbate it. It's supposed to mitigate it. So that, I'm not quite sure I agree with.
Well, hang on, I'm not sure what you said exactly.
What I'm saying is, a stormwater management system that they've designed, which currently doesn't exist on the property, is, is supposed to mitigate what's there already instead of making it worse.
Right. So that's my concern. It feels to me like they're making it worse.
I, I don't know unless you have some engineering technicalities you'd like to propose with that, knowing that.
It actually seems pretty simple to me, because right now, it's semi-flat where it gathers. And they're, they're proposing to bring more water to that area. So in the flatness that it is right now, as the water gathers and reeds, it drives right across my driveway to my barn. It seems to me like they're going to be putting a lot more water there. Does that sound correct to you, Ryan?
We are going to be adding more water to the area, but the proposed grading is creating a gradient, so that water is moving away from that area rather than stagnating in that area as it did before.
So your, your plan is to hopefully make sure it goes from your catch basin to the wetlands?
Correct. Yes. If it surcharges this bio retention area, it's gonna go usually perpendicular to the contours, so it's gonna go in this direction to the wetlands.
So if I could just interrupt here. So if you're saying this entire area is not, it doesn't perk, I mean, it's, it's basically a sheet of glass. The point that I'm gonna make is, what difference does it make if he puts a sheet of glass down and has the water all going into the wetland? It's still gonna be the same condition. So the fact of the matter is, you know, he's, they're, they're attenuating water in this, in this basin. By the way, it's not a catch basin. It's a basin. A catch basin implies it's a structure that goes down eight feet or so, and it holds water, and it's piped out somewhere else. There's no piping here at all. So this is a, this is a swale-like basin. It basically intercepts the water. It holds it for a period of time, and then what happens is, once the water fills up to a certain elevation in here, the contours are such that it's going to let physics work and let water flow downhill towards the wetland area, which is here.
That sounds totally great to me. If that's the, if that's what's gonna happen, that's perfect. Now, can we talk about that eastbound side, where you, Paul, you first mentioned that there was not gonna be any water going onto my property, into my flood drain, yet Ryan said he was going to have water going there. So are we on the same page as far as that goes, or are we still kind of mixed up here?
Ryan, go ahead, talk about it. Yeah, talk about that.
Yep. So when I was out there, I did see there was a yard drain of some sort. It was hard to tell the condition because I couldn't really see past the cover. It was made of concrete. But it's at a low point just off of John's driveway. We would like to remedy it. However, based on our boundary survey, it's located off our subject property. We did find a recorded drainage easement, assuming it goes to that structure. The dimensions were, they didn't line up completely, but I would think that's the intent of what that easement is for. There's a very small area that'd be going small relatively to the rest of the site, the drains patterns. Yes, that would sheet flow to that low point, that yard drain.
So to answer Paul's question.
But that's for your property or his property?
It, I believe, is a low point from 81 Valley Road and part of John's property.
Under existing conditions?
Correct.
In other proposed conditions, your water, what you're doing, and I'm reading the contours, is you're mounting this up here. You're setting an elevation of 250, 253 right here. Okay? So you're building this elevation?
Yep.
And then you're promoting water to be going this way into this basin here, this little pond that's gonna be holding water for a little bit of time, and then it's then gonna flow down into the wetlands. And what I'm hearing is, once again, under existing conditions, existing runoff from this site's going to this existing catch basin, which you don't know where it's connected to, but not to create another tangent here, but this is a easement line, center line that exists here, that I'm not sure how that all relates to the drainage system out here, but in terms of what, what your plans say, you're, you know, you have an existing catch basin that's on the neighbor's property that's catching runoff from both parcels that are going into here. Under existing conditions, under proposed conditions, water's gonna be doing this and no longer going to the yard drain. Is that the case, Ryan?
A portion of the property is still going to the yard drain, but it's my assessment that on, under previous conditions, even the upgrading properties to the west were sheet flowing. They were hitting this natural swale that fed everything to the catch basin. But under proposed conditions, we're intercepting everything at the western property line, and it's being circumvented around the house. So yes, there's still a portion of the front yard area that's gonna go to this yard drain, but we're eliminating all the other upgrading drainage off-site from going to that yard drain.
Okay.
So one more question on this side. Ryan, the elevation on their, on their property there, which is fairly close, what, 36 feet from the property line from that drain pipe, the elevation of their house is, is quite, quite a good amount. That water is gonna be very difficult to get to go to the backyard. Would you agree with that or disagree?
So the elevation of the house was driven by the septic system design. We would have liked to sit it lower if we could, but it didn't work out that way.
Right. And the reason for that was because?
We have to, under Mass Title V, the regulations for proposed septic systems, we have to stay four feet above the groundwater elevation.
Correct. And, and you, you are now going to be how much, how far above the groundwater?
The leach field would be four feet above, and I don't have an elevation in regards to the house to groundwater, but the top of wall of the house will be 258 and a half, and the existing grade is 253. So we're coming up, you know, five and a half feet.
Exactly. So five and a half feet of elevation drop within a 36-foot radius is quite substantial. My question is, how, how will you, are you gonna swell that to the backyard?
So I'm just doing a quick calculation of, you know, five feet over...
Says 36.
16%. So in terms of stormwater and grading, that's, that's well within normal practices.
Okay. I guess my next question would be, if you are dumping into that drain on my property, and it goes, that drain currently goes to the neighbor's property, is there a problem that they're gonna have? Or how is this gonna work out for them? Especially because this drain has already been plugged up with their silt that has been washing down over the past six months, and it's, it's already backed up and clogged up every time it rains.
Yeah, that, that's a good question. I don't have the easement language in front of me right now, but happy to send it on to you, and that's something we can hopefully coordinate with the owner and, and you guys, and see if we can get that sorted.
So yeah, basically, you're gonna be using, you're gonna be using my drain for the side of my driveway for all this, this house's water. For the most part, to me, that front yard holds quite a bit of water existing as it is now. Your proposed, seems like you're gonna be dumping quite a bit in there. So it feels to me like that, that drain, as it fills up right now, it instantly gets clogged up and starts running over my driveway. That's one of the three rivers. We've already discussed the first one. This is the second one, which my garage door is probably another 15, 20 feet away from that. So I believe that, well, how it's getting filled up right now, it's not the correct pipe size to be holding all this to begin with. So I think it's gonna get backed up instantly and instantly run across the driveway. So is there anything that can be done as far as getting a bigger pipe size for all this new water, or are we just kind of stuck with how it is?
Without having all the, the details of the conditions in front of me, I would say probably behoove you guys to get it inspected first, figure out what the problem is, and then, and then go from there.
So if I was to get this inspected and figure out how much gallons a minute it could take and run, is that something you could put into your plan as far as knowing how much would it be able to suffice, and as far as your grading goes?
There's quite a bit more that would go into it, because there's a lot of up gradient drainage off-site that would be used and the stormwater modeling involved.
Okay. I just wanted to bring it to a point that I, I have videos. I mean, literally, when there's a good rain, within 20 minutes, it's already overflowing and onto my driveway. So current conditions, it's crazy. It looks like proposed conditions is gonna be even worse. The last thing that I would like to address is the beginning of the, my driveway. There's that, that's the third river that goes across. And it looks to me like your proposed is going to bring a lot from the front of the house down toward the street, which is gonna dump a lot more water in that area than is existing currently. If you look at edge of paved driveway to the left of that center line of 15, yeah, right there, that is a river. It holds water. There's still a puddle in the front of that property as well. So it looks like your proposal is dropping water in that area even more than what's there currently. So that would be another one of my concerns.
Okay. Yeah, John, if, if you're amenable to it, I'm sure the applicant, you know, if you guys wanted to enlarge that 252 contour and create more of a low point along your driveway, that can certainly be done. We didn't show it on this plan because it's off our subject property.
Okay. No, I'm just confused, because you said there wasn't gonna be much water going onto the property, and Paul kind of asked you and confirmed that. There wasn't gonna be any water going over onto my side, which, you know, a little bit's not a big deal. But when I'm cleaning up dirt and debris and silt and sand every time it rains, it kind of gets ridiculous, especially with three rivers running across your driveway in the wintertime was a pain. So I'm just here because I'm concerned, being on a low point, it looks to me like you guys are gonna be dumping a lot more water. The backside, great, if you can run it to the wetlands, I'm happy with that. But as far as the eastbound side of this house, the northbound side of this house, it looks to me like all that water is just gonna be a nightmare, and I don't think that drain can hold it.
I'll share my screen here. I just wanna, I'm gonna just take a look, just talk about what's going on here from my perspective and what, what's going on.
Mr. Chairman, Paul?
Um, Mr. Chairman, Paul?
This is Stephen.
Yes, Stephen.
Um. Um, this is my first meeting and I hesitate to say anything, but, um, it's, uh, important that we follow the process for the stormwater permit or approvals. But, uh, what is holding property implementation of the erosion controls? Uh, that, that to some degree protect the butters from this transitional phase with all the disturb.
Well, that's what we're trying to arrive at, Stephen.
It's, it seems the limit of work could be, um, buffered with the paybales and erosion fence even before, uh, the final details grading are finished. It sounds like there might be additional information to be brought to bear to this or what's your decision?
Can you guys hear me? Can you guys see my screen and hear me?
Paul gets through presenting and Ryan and we'll, uh, get to that.
Okay.
All right. Do you guys see this, uh, GIS map here? This is MassMap, this is the state GIS system. Um, can you see this okay?
Yep.
Yes. Perfect. All right. So.
Yes.
I was having some unstable internet connection here, so I, I wasn't making, I wasn't sure if you could hear me. Um, so these are some contour lines that are, that are at a much higher uh, interval than what's on the plans. Okay? So this property that we're doing the, or this, this, this applicant is proposing to build the house here, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Water right now, as it's coming down, this is a, there's a lot of water that, that would be coming down this hillside and as we all know, water flows perpendicular contour lines. So there's a amount of water that is being collected from, from the Route ten side. All sheet flow, it's coming down. And obviously there's groundwater flow as well. You have a low, you have a wetland that's right here, that's all water coming in. This property here, relative to the, to this grand scale of topo mapping, is, is flatter than this whole section up here compared to here. I, I think this all kinda flat, flattens out. Granted, we don't have a whole lot of contours that show this, but compared to the elevations, you know, you're two ninety-five here and then you're about two forty-six, uh, at this, at this section where the wetlands are flowing. So what I'm, what I'm hearing is water that's coming down this direction, it's gonna be intercepted and it's gonna be diverted to this existing wetland area right here. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. So what's gonna happen now compared to or under future conditions compared to existing conditions? You're gonna somewhat reduce this from happening. Correct?
That's correct.
Um, sir, one thing, when you say existing conditions, you gotta remember, they've already brought in over four hundred yards of fill. And that, what you're talking about is not happening. It's already brought up, um, and it's still coming over. So yes, that would be great if they can grade it correctly, but even with the four hundred yards, it still goes right through that.
Probably just dumped it, they stopped and they came to us for their stormwater. So it's not a finished grade. So when you read their plans, their idea, their proposed conditions would be to divert the water here. In essence, you're gonna see the water that would go to your little catch basin that's right here, make a right-hand turn and go towards this wetland area. So I, I see that as a, as, as a betterment. So now it's mounting up this area where the house is going. And it's forcing the water flow to go this way. That's, that's the way that I'm reading the plans.
And that's the way I hope it goes, but once again, sir, there's already four hundred yards of fill that brought, have been brought in. Um, right where you just circled and it's still just penetrates, goes right over, floods like a river.
Once again, that's a mitigation. I mean, they stopped work on there, right? Is that the case? No one, no one answered that question.
Yeah, they haven't been here for like six months, so not sure what's going on.
So, so obviously they, they stopped work, they haven't done anything. So this mitigation plan is here to correct their um, is to come up with a grading plan that's gonna intercept that water and take care of their site.
Correct. That's the only reason why I'm here. I'm not trying to cause trouble. I'm just trying to bring.
No, no, I, I get it. It's just.
Little points that I'm concerned about.
Right. And the way that I see it is this is gonna.
You're frozen, Paul.
Looks like he has to sneeze.
Once again, the biggest thing, the, the biggest thing is, um, you know, the three rivers I got coming across my driveway now, winter is a mess. Um, kids, dog, you guys know how it is.
Can you guys, can you guys see me? Hello?
But the biggest thing would be, um, it doesn't perk, it doesn't go anywhere. It just stays there.
Hold on a minute. Uh, Paul, you back on?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, I stopped my video. I don't know if there's something with the video. I just updated my cable internet and now this, this crap's happening. So, um.
All right, question for you, Paul.
What's the question?
With your expertise, is there a need for a, uh, independent review on this?
I, I don't think so. I, I think this is, this is suffice. This is a relatively small site. It's not like they're putting, making the site eighty percent. Uh, you know, pavement here. This is a, they're putting a driveway to, to a house that's gonna be residential. I don't see a need for that.
Right. Now, getting back to Stephen, um, your, your new, and we welcome you to the board, you had some concerns now. Please come back with those, Stephen.
Well, you, excuse me, you began to get at it, asking about where we're at in the regulatory process. And whether, uh, there's a cease and desist order out and who has authority to uh, get this thing moving to get some erosion control in place. Uh, because the ultimate, uh, final condition, uh, won't be achieved for several months at best.
All right, well, the, who's got the background music or the noise, please? Could we, could we mute that background? Thank you. Um, this board is the Stormwater Management Authority. The building inspector is the enforcing body. So whatever we, uh, decide, the building inspector carries out, uh, and enforces that, um, under our guidance or uh, communicating with us. Can I answer your question, Stephen?
No. Um, does Concom have jurisdiction or has that been ruled out?
No, nothing, nothing to do with this stormwater permit. No.
Right. So in order to relieve the cease and desist, which you suggested is local, not state or federal, the first thing that should be compelled is the installation of the erosion control at the limit of work, I would think.
Stephen, there, there was a cease and desist on any activity there because it was reported that the, uh, property owner had disturbed more than forty thousand square feet, which then triggers a stormwater permit. So thus, that's why we're here because it was reported that there was uh, activity going on that was beyond the scope of, of what they were supposed to be doing.
Clearly.
That's where we're at now.
Yep. Well, I would, um, encourage wrapping this up so that the erosion control can get placed and I think there should be a time limit.
The, the erosion control is part of this application. If there's no work being done on the site currently and they're, they're here for an application.
Yes, Paul, I.
To, to include that mitigation.
Paul, I get it. And that's the jam we need to unlock so that the first critical step can be taken forthwith.
So what do you suggest?
I'm inclined to, um, vote yes for the permit with the condition that the erosion control be installed in seven days.
Paul, your feelings on that?
Um. And the, the, it's giving a directive on, on timeframe that puts something in, uh, I'm not one hundred percent in favor of, given that, that's not something that you can just tell someone to find, you know, six hundred feet of, of silt fence in seven days and put it up there. Cause this, you know, you gotta get a contractor to do it. You gotta be able to get someone to supply it. You gotta be, get someone to deliver it. So I, I think we stress the importance of this being done immediately and having it done. Um, and then go from there. I would not recommend putting any timeframe because I don't think that's doable.
Really?
Knowing how this industry works, being a civil engineer and all.
Think you froze up again, Paul.
Is it the current landowner who moved the fill? Or is that, that the current owner bought it with his?
No, the current, the current owner brought it in six months ago and I agree with you. Um, he should have had erosion control before he brought it in. And since he didn't, I believe you're right, he should have that, that done immediately.
It, it's a total mess right now in terms of trying to get stuff delivered, trying to get contract. Paul, I got knocked off. I'm back. I'm not sure if there's some.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um. Giving you my opinion on this, I think, I, I think my recommendations are this is a betterment to what's out there at this present moment. Um, the applicant's engineer had identified mitigation measures that under future grading con- conditions are going to promote water flow toward the back of the property away from his neighbor as it is. Um, seeing what the existing topography is out there now and what they're proposing to do, I, I don't have any issues with the plan as it's being proposed.
Are there any conditions that you would impose, uh, erosion control or anything of that nature ASAP?
But I, I would suggest get the erosion controls in there as soon as possible. Putting a timeframe on there is not feasible, given the environment we're in. And even if this was normal times, seven days would be, would be awfully thin, um, and not achievable.
It's gone on, um, seven and a half months.
Well, it's, it's, uh, it, it probably had continued further if it wasn't neighbors, uh, like yourself or someone else that, uh, formed the town, what was going on there because, um, obviously no one had a clue.
Yep. Yep, like I said, not against.
Support Paul's position on wrapping this up tonight.
Right. So he's gotta find a contractor. He's gotta get.
Yeah, Paul's gone again, uh, but he laid out the, uh, findings well and I agree with them and recommendation that we uh, close the hearing and approve the plan. Um, and so I'll put that motion on the floor so it can be discussed. I think that brings us back to the committee.
That sounds good to me. Um, one more thing, if I may, um, speaking of the soil erosion control, all that good stuff. Um, the neighbor to the, um, westbound side of this lot, um, how I think Paul was showing us how the water runs and it, it, uh, it's gets diverted once they start making, um, you know, their elevation changes and diverting the water around. I just wanna bring it to a point that when the, when the neighbor on the far westbound side, um, Ryan Knolf did his, he immediately put up the erosion control and it has been up ever since he's done that. It's, he hasn't even taken it down yet. So with that said, with all that water that apparently moves to the backside, the, the, um, the south side, uh, what, what you guys are proposing to change that and bring it to the south side, he's already diverting it over there. And we're still having issues where I am. So if he's having issues with his erosion control and bringing it to the south, you guys are proposing that they're gonna divert all their water to the south. I just don't see any of the, any of that happening with the, given the fact that Ryan still has his up. So all his water, all that mountain water that you were discussing, all that stuff that's supposed to be moved with this new grade. If it's coming through and gathering and, uh, dumping on the current property that we're talking about now and still going over the driveway, I just don't see how any of this stuff is gonna happen, especially because that ground does not perk at all. It really doesn't. I still got a pond, I still got a pond out there. It just doesn't move. They've, they've, Ryan has had his fence up, um, since he built that house and it's still, all the water from the property we're talking about just comes right over to mine. It just happens. So all the mountain water, basically my point is has already been diverted with Ryan's and I'm still having issues with the property next door. So hopefully it happens. We'll see what happens, but I, I'm definitely on board with what you guys are saying as far as I'm putting up silt fences, soil control. Definitely has to been, be done, should have been done seven months ago.
Um, Ryan Nelson and Paul, I think you both, uh, explained that previously on that west side property where, uh, that's gonna hit with these mitigation that's going in now is gonna hit and go down to the south side, correct?
Correct.
Yep. Yep, it's supposed to, but once again, it's all, it already is.
Like, we have to, we have to trust the engineering on the, the, uh, plan going forward, not the existing conditions as they are now.
Yep, but I'm just curious about existing conditions. It's not what you have on the map. There's four hundred yards of fill over there and two ponds that they got. It's a totally different than existing on paper.
Ryan, is, is all that four hundred yards then there, what's on the site currently, that's all gonna be graded to conform to your plan, correct?
Correct. The fill on site is nowhere near in the configuration of proposed contours.
Okay.
Paul, are you, are you with us or you off the line?
Oh, I'm still here. Hopefully, I, I just switched over from my, uh, I just switched something on my internet here. So hopefully this goes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Stephen, but I think you have a motion on the floor to, uh, close this, uh, close this, uh, hearing discussion and, um, move the question.
That is correct.
I'll second that.
I'm ready.
Motion, uh, made by Stephen and, uh, seconded by Dan to close this hearing. All in favors, Dan?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay. I need a, uh, I need a, a motion with conditions. Motion to approve the plan as presented by Levesque Associates and any conditions you wanna add to that?
I, I don't have any conditions to add. Um, I don't think we need to have any timeframe added for emerg- for the erosion control, except it should be done as soon as possible.
But, but that is a condition, correct?
I mean, I would expect them, yes, as soon as possible. Yes.
Are you making the, the motion then, Paul?
I'd like to make that motion to add a condition as soon as possible. Get those out there.
Motion made. Do we have a second?
Um, first, is there any way to, um, add a condition as far as that drain pipe, how much it can hold and flow?
Excuse me, just a minute. Uh, do I have a second on the motion?
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion now, Mr. John?
Yes, just, uh, should there be any conditions put in, in place as far as the drain, the drainage that is there currently that gets, um, continuously backed up the second it rains? Is there any way we can put a condition on as far as if you guys are dumping water into that? Um, shouldn't it be able to handle it?
Well, if I can make a statement on that, in my opinion, um, the, the way I see it is like this, you have an existing condition that if it's faulty under existing conditions and it's on your property. if it's faulty under existing conditions and it's on your property and if your prop, if your property owns that structure, that's something that's on your end. This property owner. But just, just, just hold on, let me just finish.
Okay.
You're, you, you should be certainly discussing this with the adjacent property owner because you have a case to make to him that, under his current conditions that are out there in a site, it potentially clogged. And I don't know if that's the case, but that's what you're claiming. That's outside of what our purview is here. Our, our purview is to understand what they're gonna be doing under future conditions on their property. And as, as it relates to their future property, that's something that should be discussed between you and that homeowner. We don't have, we can't tell him to to review all, you know, adjacent pipe structures and, and catchment areas. You know, that's, that's outside of his property. If that was a, if he was touching it. Right, but if he, he's not touching it, it's on your property. Ultimately, you're the one that owns it. And I don't know what the easements are written like. That's something that, you know, the fact that it's on your property, you know, it, it's, it's pointing towards you without even seeing what that's written.
Paul, I completely agree with you a hundred percent, but the plan dumps water into it.
No, his plan is to, is, his plan is actually, it appears to be diverting more water than putting water into it. And the fact that it's clogged up now is probably as a result of, and I, I, by the way, I haven't I've, I've driven the site, driven by the site, I have not been on the site, I have not looked at the structures, I'm looking at plans that have been provided by an engineer that has been, that has stamped, it appears that they're gonna intercept water that has been historically going down in the direction towards sewer property and, and move it to the south. So frankly, you know, if I was you, the way I would handle this is to, to have a discussion with the property owner Jason and saying, look, this, this appeared to have happened, and this is what I think you know, we need to come up to a resolution on in terms of how this is gonna be rectified. So you know, in terms of what our planning board is, you know, control is, we, we.
But let me get this straight, this is storm water control hearing, correct?
Correct, but it's on your property.
Right, but with them dumping more onto it.
They don't appear to be dumping more water, they're actually.
Well, if I can, if Ryan's still there, that was one of his conditions, was it was going to go on to that prop, on to my property to drain. That's one of the things he said.
Correct, but it already does. We're, we're mitigating, we're, we're creating a mound that's diverting.
Okay, so that's totally fine. My, my whole thing is, is there any conditions that need to be met as far as how much water can be diverted into this small drain that doesn't handle what, what's already there?
No, there's, the project doesn't trip any thresholds that would trigger.
Require any, any conditions to dump water onto my property into my drain from the property that you're proposing to dump water onto. It doesn't require any conditions at all.
Not, not going forward under the plans that we have to approve. We can't do anything about past conditions or current conditions. We can only, we can only mitigate what's here before us going forward with a new plan.
Exactly, but I guess my, my whole point is, the very first thing Ryan said was water would be going into that drain. So there's no conditions as far as how much that drain can hold and take when it's right there butting my property and flooding over currently. That's my whole point. If you're gonna divert water, more water, or even the same amount of water, or even a little less, and it back, it's currently backing up as is. To how much water that can actually take? I, I mean, I'm just asking.
Go ahead, Paul. You there, Paul?
It just seems to me like you got, if you dump water into a sewer drain, you, you have to have a certain amount of sewer drain to hold the water. I mean, I don't know. I'm not an engineer. I'm hoping someone here is.
Well, we have a couple that have spoken on the subject.
Right, well.
Paul, are you there? Ryan, you want to address any more of that?
I think I'm just reiterating, reiterating the same points.
I, I, Paul, I suggest be, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you guys hear me? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm horrible action issues here. This has never happened to me. So, so look, I, I, I respect what the adjacent homeowner, property owners is asking for. I, I understand his concern. I would be, I would be upset with what's, what I would see there as well. However, in terms of what our board role is, that, that's outside of our take on this property's work here. So I, I would suggest we, you know, we've, we've already made a condition that erosion control needs to be set up. And, you know, if I was, if I was you, you know, if I was a butter, I would be asking them to someone to clean out that basin, just to make sure that that capacity there is met on, as it's intended to. Not reading what the deed is, not reading what the easement granted to whoever owns the right. You know, that's something that you need to investigate and understand yourself, what that intend, what that purpose is and what that, what that uh, history is there. But if you think that basin's been, you know, clogged up by the adjacent property, that's something you should be asking that property owner adjacent to you to clean out.
Uh, I'm not worried about cleaning it. I could do that myself. My whole point, how much water are you diverting to that pipe? And who, who, who's there to say how much it can take? That's, that's all I'm, I'm asking is, Ryan's got water going down to that pipe. And I'm just curious as far as, is there any conditions that need to be met as far as how much water can go into that pipe?
I don't, I don't think we can, we can predict that.
Okay, so.
With the, with the, with the measures they have taken, it is going to be minimal, I'm sure. With, with the measures they've taken on this plan compared to what the existing conditions are, and we, we have to trust that.
Good luck with that one.
We have a motion made and seconded to move on with this stormwater permit.
Do you want me to reread the, the motion?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the plan as brought by RLA with, with erosion control set up as soon as possible. Motion made by Mr. Fergal, seconded by Mr. LaValle.
All in favor, Dan?
Aye.
Paul? Stephen?
Aye.
Paul? Got a bad connection again.
All aye. Do you guys hear me? Aye?
Yes, gotcha.
Oh, man, I got it. I, I hate this internet thing.
The motion's been approved and I'll send these decision along to the city clerk and the building inspector and the highway department.
Okay, so it's approved, even though nobody, we're dumping water into a drain that has not been, example. I find that very, very crazy, but let's hope Levesque knows what they're doing. That's all.
I hope so too. I trust they do. I trust they do.
Let's dump water into a drain. We have no idea how much it can hold. Sound, that sounds really, really smart, but okay, you guys approved it. It's on you. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going on now to an A and R that was submitted by Carol and Ronald Lauren for two twenty-seven. Pomeroy Meadow Road. Uh, let me see if I can bring this up because Mrs. Lauren cannot be here tonight on Zoom because she is not informed how to do so, and I told her that we would review the plan. I would put her on speaker. In case we had any questions that we could relay to her. So, does everybody see the screen?
Yeah, it's a little hard to.
All right, this is this the Manhattan River down here on the East Hampton side off of Pomeroy Meadow Road. The bridge is down here somewhere by where our pictures are. There's a big, there's a little log home back here that's been here for many years. And this is, all this land here is in chapter sixty-one A or had been, including the house. So the property owner that purchased it years ago is now going to subdivide that single parcel which you see here where the house is here. There's a barn offset off the property line which is on the other remaining land. And if you see up in the upper left-hand corner, point nine one eight acres, forty thousand square feet, they've got the frontage on Pomeroy Meadow. And are also, they have an easement that they worked out with the respective buyer. Twenty-four foot wide easement, so the the landowner and the, the rest of the property there can access that for his paying the fields and farming activities that he's doing. So I have my phone at the ready to call Mrs. Lauren unless anybody has any questions regarding this.
I have no questions.
Stephen? Yeah, Mr. Chairman, does this involve a chapter sixty-one A withdrawal? Or did you say that has been completed?
Uh, I'm not, I'm not sure, but it wouldn't pertain to this anyway, Stephen. They would have to do that separately, but um, this entire parcel at one time was all one, one property. Now, now they're breaking that particular portion up. And I'm, I'm assuming that portion of it, they probably are gonna take out a chapter land, they would have to.
Well, thank you, Paul. I think that the way it would have been assessed is somewhat different than what you described, but it ta, removing the house from the farmland, um, if someone's continuing to work the farmland, uh, I think neither on the sixty-one A withdrawal nor on the A and R would I have a problem.
Yeah, I would see that you see the square, the box parcel I know, the, the last paragraph in that talks about the chapter sixty-one A for the, the, um, the housing land.
Could you read that? Because I cannot see it.
The entirety of this parcel, and they're according to the parcel that contains the home, uh, is currently excluded from chapter sixty-one A, CD one one nine four five dash two five eight. So, so that, that, the housing portion was excluded from chapter sixty-one A. And the rest of the land, I'd imagine, is in, in chapter sixty-one A.
Yes, it is.
But that's how I would understand the normal operation of sixty-one A.
Exactly. Just wanted to make sure that, that was, I mean, it's written right there, so.
Yeah, I could not read the plan and that helps. Thank you.
Yep.
So, Paul, Chairman, Chairman Paul, you said there's frontage enough for both lots under current zoning. Can you tell us what the requirement is and what they have?
It's one, it's one forty in that district.
So they have more than two eighty?
Oh yeah, and then they've still got over here where the chapter land is, there's one, almost one forty-two that well, hopefully it'll remain chapter land, but I wouldn't be surprised, you know, going down the road someday that they have room to do a development there. I wouldn't like to see it, but nice piece of property, but there's eleven, eleven point two acres left, that still has that frontage available if they decide to do something with it down the road.
Are there any other tricks or traps in your saying this?
I don't. Do I, and that's why I want to know if anybody Paul, are you available still? Are you offline? Because if I need to call Mrs. Lauren for any questions. You there, Paul?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Now I can, yep.
Uh, not a fan of the two driveways, easement one being twenty-four feet wide, then having another driveway within uh, being right next to each other. So under proposed conditions, are there gonna be two driveways within, you know, touching each other like that? To me, I think that's not.
It's, it's not a, it's not a paved driveway, Paul, it's just access, it's gonna be grass and it's just gonna be access to the farming property. Will not be paved.
So is it gonna be an open pavement, pavement, is there gonna be a curb cut there?
No, 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 no curb cut, no.
Okay, that, that's my only concern is making sure this, this doesn't grant them another curb cut opening.
No, no, it's, uh, the proposed buyer of the property is agreed to grant them the access to the land from there.
Okay, I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. That being said, anybody, everybody's good with this? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the A and R as, as shown.
I'd like to second, I'd like to second the endorsement of this A and R.
Motion by Dan and seconded by Paul. All in favor, Dan?
Aye.
Paul? Paul? Stephen?
Aye.
Myself, aye. And Paul, if he seconded, I'm sure he's for it, so.
Stephen, aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. Thank you. Motion approved. I don't have any other business, I accept a couple of warrants here. Expenditures. And they're all to do with our recent zoning package that we got approved at town hall. And I, once again, I'll thank you guys personally. I sent an email and I'll thank you all personally for being a part of it. The last six and a half years, those past and present, it was gratifying to see that go through, it was a lot of work. Six and a half years worth. But in order to get there, we had to post a public hearing and it was quite lengthy. And we owe the Daily Hampshire Gazette one thousand three hundred forty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents for two ads, which were almost like six hundred and seventy dollars apiece for two runnings. So I'd ask an approval on that amount for that invoice.
Stephen moves approval.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, Dan?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Paul?
All aye.
All aye too. And then the second one, which is, goes along with that, Paradise Copies. Not knowing how many people would show up to town hall that night, having never gone before this, I, I was figuring maybe three hundred people or so, four hundred people. Just, I was just, I was just guessing and I couldn't get a good estimate from the town clerk or anybody else. So I wanted to be on the safe side, but I took the summary sheet that Richard Harris had drawn up for us. And then I copied the correlating chapters that went. And then I copied the correlating chapters that went with the major changes. Uh, and made a packet up. Uh, the ones that had the minor uh. Uh, edits and, and whatever else that E code, general code did, um, was not sufficient enough to do it. Nor did I wanna print up the entire zoning uh, bylaw. So, I don't know how many pages it was and I guess uh, let me see. Uh, dear. So I made two hundred, two hundred packets and I told the people at the polls, I said, could you just ask? Uh, people to take one per couple, if there was, so I could at least maybe, uh, if there was four hundred people gonna show up. I could at least have two hundred sets for everybody, cause I. I wanted to be on the safe side. Well. We went through probably, maybe one and a quarter. Times that, but didn't make any difference. But anyway. That cost four hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-five cents, so um, I need approval for the copying to go through that. And by the way, the ARPA funds that we were granted, uh, that's what it's coming out of, so. Won't affect our um, miniscule budget that we have anyway. So four forty-six twenty-five. Motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, Dan?
Aye.
Paul?
All aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you. That's it for business. Anybody else have anything, uh, I, before I ask for any committee things? Stephen, I wanna welcome you and uh. I, I, I do, I didn't check the uh. Election results, but I assume Mark Darnold made it as well, correct?
I, I don't know.
I believe you did.
Assume so.
Cause I think there was only two of you vying for it, so, uh, anyway.
Indifferent slots, yes.
Right. So, thank you. I will um. I will get you a copy of the bylaws shortly. I'll, if I can't meet with you personally, which I'd like to just to introduce myself and. Give me a, what we do, I'll get you a copy of the bylaws and we'll go from there.
Great.
Thank you for your service and volunteering. Is there any committee reports from anyone or any information you'd like to share?
I just wanna note that in the um, in the agenda, we had an item. Which we may have already done, it was the address assignment for property adjacent to two twenty-seven Pomeroy Meadow Road.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. I, I realized afterwards that. The two thirty-five is what we just approved, and I thought I was gonna have to assign a number to the uh. Remaining chapter land, but it, it appears it's two twenty-seven, so um, I do, I don't have to touch it. Uh, I didn't realize it was already uh. Uh, had an address, so we're good on that.
Thank you.
Any other information, reports? Well, thank you all and uh, see you in a couple of weeks. Uh, Stephen, we'll put you uh. Send your email to the Southampton Planning Board at gmail dot com. Dan will uh, get you set up on the forwarding. Uh, meeting notices and any other pertinent information. Joy, by the way, is there anything you need to, to fill us in on or have anything to say?
Not at this moment, no. Congrats on the passing of the zoning bylaws.
Yeah, thank you.
You're here.
Thank you very much. And thank you uh, and the select board for getting general code to. Get us into the twenty-first century on that and uh. Helping us along with it. Other than that, I have no other business. If somebody wants to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion. Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.